I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, the junior republic where we stand, one nation under a gun, indivisible, in the liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
Present.
Mr. Kinzer? Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mulholland?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do we have-
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Maxey and a second by Mulholland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Alright. That takes us to audience to visitors having none. We'll move on to the treasurer's report.
Hi guys, as presented, it's not sent by mark yet. We have our auditor's adjustments rolled into our system already, so for the next meeting, I will have updated the auditor's adjustments. So right now what you guys have is both the auditor's adjustments and the auditor's adjustments.
Any comments? Questions? Alright, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We will begin with our cheerleaders. As always, I want to welcome our cheerleading parents, our students, our cheerleading team, as well as our coaches. Thank you guys. I wrote down in my notes, this is becoming an annual thing, which I love. Congratulations to you guys, another outstanding year. And I got the honor and the privilege of seeing them on Saturday, as they placed third in the state. So, with that being said, Crystal Joel and Kim Croll are our coaches. Crystal is out sick tonight, but Kim, I always put you on the spot every year, and I said if you would give the board a little summary of the year and the highlights, because they really had an outstanding year, and I thank you guys.
For sure. Where should I go?
Anywhere you want.
Where?
How about right to the podium? Because we broadcast live and you're out over thousands and millions right now.
Alright. So as you know, I'm Kimberly Croll. Crystal, apologize for not being able to make it, she is under the weather. So this team is comprised of three seniors, three juniors, two sophomores, and four freshmen. And they worked so very hard to accomplish their goals this year. Our first open gym was held on April 15th, 2018. So since then, they've been putting in lots and lots of hours to make this happen. They attended summer camp at Carthage College, they cheered for all of the home football and playoff games. Our competition season officially began on October 22nd. Our team competed twice, in December at Guilford High School and Rolling Meadows High School, where they earned first place at both. In January, we competed at Belvedere High School, Grayslake North High School, and Oak Forest High School, where we earned first and two seconds. We had a goal at the beginning of the season that we wanted to win the Big Northern competition, and they crushed that goal on January 17th. It was the first time that a cheer team from North Boone High School had won the Big Northern. We competed at sectionals and placed fourth to earn our third trip in a row to IHSA State in Bloomington. On day one, we did very well, and we were sitting at fifth place at the end of the day. It was enough to make it through to day two, but we knew we could do better, and we knew that we needed to be near perfect to make it onto the podium. This group of kids set their sights on walking across the podium back in April, and they left it all out on the mat on day two. Everything hit, there weren't any tumbling touchdowns, their motions and formations were better than they've ever looked before, and what they did earned them third place in our highest finish ever in our program. We're so proud of each and every one of these kids and what they accomplished to bring home North Boone's first IHSA trophy for a team sport in 27 years. We also want to thank Dr. Greenly for all his support throughout the season. We're so glad that you could make it to day two, and watch us walk across the podium as well. We want to thank our principal, Mr. Hubert, for all of his encouragement and support throughout the entire season, and as I mentioned, it's a long one. We want to thank the parents of these kids for everything that they do. We really do have the best parents, and we couldn't do what we do without all of you guys. We want to thank everyone in the community that's extended their congratulations to us as well. It means so much to all of us. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
You have a collage for these two.
Oh, great. Awesome. I'll put it on Mr. Hubert's bulletin board, so he's got something. Thank you guys so much. And knowing absolutely nothing about cheer, you should have gotten first. What I wanted to do at this time was, we have certificates of accomplishment that we wanted to just recognize the cheerleading team with, and have them come forward. After that, we'll give parents a chance to snap pictures if they want to, and then I turn it over to the cheerleaders, because I let the board grill you with the hard questions then, like I typically get. So what I want to do is grill you. So, Mr. Harrell, if you'll join me, we'll recognize the girls and the whole team, because Jonah, those foot flops you did this year, unbelievable. That was incredible. So, let's first start with Kylie Nelson. Come on up. And let's have you stay right in charge. Hannah Wunderbacher. Alexis Seeball. Emma Lissens. Jenna Shad. Miranda Wagner. Olivia Topping, is Olivia here?
She's gonna make it tonight. Yep.
We'll make sure she gets that. Samantha Beckerman. Kenzie Lehman? Did I say that? Emily Fike? Did I say that? Justine Owens. I purposely put this one last, because I want foot flops on the way up. So, you know what, thank you guys very much. Parents, if you want to grab pictures or take a photo, Heather, if you'll grab a photo shot for the district, we'll make sure it's very good.
Can you guys go in front of the-
Right, you guys can just work these down in the middle a little bit, we'll let everybody get pictures. And I'll get out.
Might as well just get in your normal formation.
Me getting used to it too. Watching you guys get to get medals and all that.
Come on, girl. Drop down. Drop down. There we go.
Hi Will, Joe, come on up.
Where's your medal, Dr. Greenly?
Yeah, where's yours?
It is hanging up in my office. I should have it on. Like I said, I feel bad that they're getting certificates after they got to go through the medal ceremony, because that was real important.
Ready? One, two, three. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. I was gonna let the board ask if you guys had any questions. So one question I asked you guys, and I kind of remember the answer. What was the most stressful point of that whole year? That's what I remembered you guys saying, was the sectionals.
They're always extremely nervous at sectionals. Once they get to state, their nerves seem to go away. I mean, they're nervous still, but not to the level of sectionals.
Board members, any questions from you guys? I mean, it was fabulous to see them down there Saturday, they did an awesome job, I'm so proud. And then why I get to go to the podium and pick a medal. I did not. I felt like I got a medal for a two-hour drive. Yeah, I did. I was like, oh, this isn't right. But thank you guys very much. Wonderful year.
Thanks, you. It means so much to us.
That was fun.
I'll make sure they get these too.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You're not obligated to stay.
Yeah, typical line, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're not obligated. So, thank you guys for coming. No, you can do it. You can do it. It's not on your- That one I've seen done both ways.
I was kind of expecting a boombox and some sort of formation or something.
I get two other things on my superintendent's report. Last week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I got a chance to go down to the ESA conference in Chicago. And it was, I think for me, this is one of the best ones of the year. It gives me a lot of stuff about the things that are going on, just from a district development side. A lot of sessions on curriculum development, district-wide, student instructional programming, student social emotional program, and also creating strong links with parents. Came away thinking that we have done a lot of things the right way. We've got a lot of work to do, but I also feel like the processes that we have begun to work on and start in place are the right things moving forward for long-term success. So, if anybody would like to find out more about those sessions, we'd be more than happy to talk to you about those. And the last thing is, I will be sending out communications out this week to students and parents, and staff, with our amended calendars. In summary, our students will have to make up five of our seven days that we've canceled so far. So they will be in session until May 31st. And staff will have two extra days to make up beyond those five. I have worked with both of our union presidents, and I will share more of those details with you shortly here, on how those work. But they've got to make two of those days up, and I'll share those details with you. And that's what I have for superintendent's report, if you have any questions.
Questions for Mike? Alright, thank you Mike.
Thank you.
Brings us to committee reports. Do we have a committee report on policy?
We have not.
Alright. Business services, we just met.
Business services, we met right in front of this, just to give a quick overview. The online registration portal is up and running, and they hope to have that online in April. Are ready to run for parents, will have a proposal back to us next month for picking a vendor to use for payment for that plan. Pre-K program, we're looking to expand that. If there's some thoughts and some ideas out there, there'll be some more communication back with the board before we have anything to vote on. Student fees, lunch fees, transportation fees were something that we'll be dealing with here later on. They made that proposal to us, and also a proposal on insurance committee update. So those things will all be up for board action tonight.
Thank you. Ed, did we have a facilities and long-range planning meeting?
No, we haven't had one, and we'll probably schedule one after the roof bid is in, so we can discuss what the rest of our summer projects will be.
And CIA?
We have not met. We do need to meet. We've got summer school proposals coming up that I'd like to meet with the committee on, and K-5 math text adoption. So, do you want to set the meeting now, or should we text back and forth and get that set up? What I'm probably looking is early March.
I was gonna say, I'm good early March.
Carl, I'll just have to look.
Like the 5th or the 6th or something?
We typically go on Wednesdays, if that works.
It'll be the 6th.
You okay with that too, Carl?
Mm-hmm.
March 6th, CIA meeting. And Kelly, we can work together to get those invites up. And I'll work on an agenda, get it forwarded to you, Brian.
Okay. So it'll be 3:45?
3:45, if that works.
Good. That takes us to consent agenda. And this consent agenda contains minutes for the regular meeting, personnel, first reading of the policy, and by NBYs contract. We have a motion for the consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second. Motion by Mulholland and a second by Hazelhors. Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to unfinished business. Strategic plan updates, this is first, Mike.
Yes, just a quick update. I work with building administrators, and with all the testing going on, I was looking for the best date. Joe is checking with you to hold our reconvene meeting. Would May 3rd work for you? It's a Friday? And if not, I'll work with you on another date.
Alright.
You want to check calendar, let me know? But we're tentatively shooting for May 3rd, if that works.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's gonna work.
Okay. That gives me plenty of time to get the committee back together, let them make arrangements and everything. And with all of the park testing, the map testing, the science testing, what other testing am I missing? SAT testing, it's just, it's hard to get a good window in there, so May 3rd we felt would be the best spot. Hopefully that's not too busy for everybody in this room.
Mike, can you summarize real quick what we'll be doing essentially on-
We will take a look at the entire strategic plan, go over and make sure that everything within the- We'll talk a little bit about updating with where we're at and what we've done in the plan, and then give everybody a chance to dialogue and talk about, are we still on target with where we want to continue to go, and is this still the right plan for us?
Okay.
For the strategic plan dates.
Sounds good. How about the roof design?
Yes. We've got design fees back from Cashman Installer. The approximate fee for the roof design, so we can get it out to bid, would be $11,250. That's about a seven and a half percent fee rate of what they charge with those. We'd like to continue to move that, so that we can get the design out, and then up for bid, if the board will approve that.
Do we have a motion for the roof design?
Make a motion to go forward with the design and bidding process. With a Manchester gymnasium roof.
Motion by Moon, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Maxey. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Brings us to the sewer repair and design.
Yeah, my hope was is that we would have something from Cashman Installer on that. We do not yet, they're still working with the civil engineer on this project, but they are moving forward with preliminary investigative work, and as soon as we got that back, so there's nothing to vote on here, as soon as they get that back, we'll get that to the board to keep that moving as well.
Takes us to new business, and February 2019 bills. I think that was you, Carl?
Oh, that was me. I reviewed them and have no questions.
Alright, do we have a motion for the February 2019 bills?
I approve two bills.
Second.
Motion by Rudy, and a second by Maxey. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call please Kelly.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to the approval of registration fees for 2019-2020.
Yes, we just met with business committee and talked about registration fees. We are recommended that they remain the same for the 2019-20 year. It's really the proposal. If there's any questions, discussion, thoughts, we just talked about that at the business meeting, so. But fees would remain the same.
Alright, do we have a motion for the registration fees?
I'm not sure that we approved the registration fees as-
Second.
Motion by Maxey, and a second by Mulholland. Any discussion? Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Which brings us to the approval of the 2019-2020 lunch and à la carte prices.
Yeah, our proposal is to keep the lunch fees the exact same for the 2019-20 year. We did recently have an audit where they're suggesting within the next three years, we raise prices, but for next year, we want to keep them the same, and not raise any prices for next year as well.
Do we have a motion and a second for the approval of the lunch and à la carte prices?
Make a motion to approve the 2019 lunch and à la carte prices.
Motion by Moon, do we have a second?
A second.
Alright, we have a motion by Moon, and a second by Hazelhors. Any discussion? Questions? Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to approval of the 2020 transportation fees.
Yes, we just talked about that as well, as in the business committee and our committee meeting, and our recommendation is that our students that participate in the preschool program will be eligible for free bus transportation, which has not been the case previously, but moving forward into next year, it would be. So our preschool students, yeah.
Do we have a motion and a second for the transportation fees?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
The motion by- One caveat to that is, we're still gonna have a conversation about whether to continue that program going forward. The fee rates have been set, but whether we're going out for those services still to be determined. Is that fair?
It says on there, but it's a preschool course, so it's not a warranty program based on the, so if we determine that we don't have enough drivers to fill the routes for the paid transportation, then we will exempt those obligations, so.
We have a motion by Mulholland, and a second by Maxey. Any further discussion? Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhors?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the insurance committee update, which is just informational.
Yes, it is. We just talked about that again in the business committee. I will turn that over to Melissa. Melissa, if you wanted to just kind of give us a summary of what we discussed about the insurance committee?
Yes, I'll actually read this.
No vote, it's all informational, excuse me.
Yeah, but, so we met with insurance committee, we'll have a renewal proposal in May for our renewal insurance for next year. Our HRA, which is the health reimbursement account, is going well. We spent about $18,000 on that, but I think the staff are understanding that it's easy to use, and things that have come up, we've made some tweaks for staff. We're doing some professional development, we're looking at some wellness initiatives to help some preventative things for staff as well, and helping drive down some of our insurance costs. The big thing that I wanted to bring, and I'll bring it back in March, is that with our flex funding account, there is a fee that the month that our staff have to pay as well, because that's, and some people said it has deterred them from becoming a member in the flex funding account. The benefit to the district of spending is the more people enroll, the more money is coming out, we get tax savings on that, and so there's a point where if we can get more people to enroll, there's potential for higher tax savings. Right now, we're kind of breaking even, so I was hoping that the district could take on that tax, that monthly fee, that we could get some more savings, and so we actually can have that on there. So, I'll bring that back in March for your greatest consideration. We had talked to the business team too, that if we find out every year that that's not really why people aren't doing it, then we can go back and say, the district's not gonna pay these fees, it's a religion, or it's not really thematic, but we can go back that way too. So that's just kind of a recommendation, try and get that, people to use that back to the person. Any questions on insurance?
Any questions? Thank you Melissa. And that takes us to the approval of the director of curriculum.
Yes. I'm asking for the board to approve curriculum director position. This position was recommended as a next steps piece on our CEC curriculum audit. This recommendation from the CEC was shared with the board in October, and the curriculum committee in November. It does fit with our current processes of what we've done, worked on, and put in place. And I have some more slides, Kelly, if you'll roll to those, where I want to talk a little more about the administrative structure and rationale. So, like we've been talking a lot, our instructional vision right now is to strengthen the instructional leadership, to ensure that all the subjects and the grade levels are implementing curricular changes that are focused on, on the identified crucial standards, really hitting the standards, as opposed to just teaching next from the textbook. Next slide, please. The instructional needs that we have identified, that we see that our district needs is, one, realigned learning objectives implemented, so we've done math and science already, we've got those standards outlined, we need to see that implementation come to the classroom. Differentiation enhanced. By that, I'm talking about our multi-tier support system, which is MTSS. Those are our students that are struggling and need supports, as well as accelerated learners. We've got to, we've got to do a better job of differentiation instruction to reach all of our learners. We have to grow some of our professional development and collaboration time, which I will have recommendations with a calendar, that'll help with that. By that, I'm talking about subject level, grade level, teacher meetings that work on instruction, and implementing the best practice of instruction in our classrooms. Strengthen PBIS. I'm gonna change the wording on that a little bit. Really, by PBSF, PBIS, what I'm talking more about is our support for our social and emotional needs of our kids. Our kids need to be in class, our kids need to know what it's like to persevere, and when maybe things aren't going well, how do we, how do we put forth that effort? How do we, how do we strengthen what we're doing as we persevere towards our goals? And so, really what I'm talking about is keeping kids in class and helping them persevere towards their targets and their goals. And the last piece in there too, which really falls in line with what we designed to put in place, was a curriculum coordinator. That coordinator, and we'll go to the next, would be a district office position. It would really oversee the curriculum and implementation. It's one more level to help with our principals, with implementation of our standards and what we need to teach, both with differentiation, MTSS, enrichment, and especially our core, our tier-one core. That core that hits 80 to 90% of our kids, we need a strong core, and that curriculum coordinator will help us with overseeing that process, and helping get that implementation into the classroom, along with the building principals. And then, that idea with instructional coordinators, where I will use some of my principals' shared responsibilities, to help with, almost like a triangulation of people, to help put that into place, is what we're looking for there. Like I said, back to the curriculum director's role. That role is to provide leadership for the pre-K 12, for all curriculum and instruction and assessments, and ensures that our educational objectives are aligned to our state frameworks, making sure that we're hitting the core standards, instructional practices are maximized, and instructional program supports the student and the district needs, which, you know, we have done a lot of work on the past few years here, so. That is my job recommendation for the curriculum director's role. I also put a job description in your board packet as well, and that is something that I have pulled a little bit from what some of the roles we had here, and a lot of other district director of curriculum, instruction and assessment, job descriptions from area job descriptions too. So, kind of a little bit of everything, with hitting all of our needs that we've seen have come forward to us at this point. At this point, I would take questions from the board, comments, thoughts, discussion.
Mike, where's the number for the projected cost to the district?
What I did there was, we looked at- I have pulled a little bit from what some of the roles we had here, and a lot of other district director of curriculum, instruction and assessment, job descriptions from area, job descriptions too, so, kind of a, little bit of everything with hitting all of our needs that we see have come forward to us at this point. At this point, I would take questions from the board, comments, thoughts, discussion.
Mike, where's the number for the projected cost to the district?
Um, what I did there was, we looked at the range of salaries for what, and what I was looking at was an experienced curriculum coordinator in the area.
And you looked at actual salaries right now in the area?
Yes. Kind of the market for what those salaries would be. So that's an approximate.
I apologize, when I first saw this over the weekend, I didn't realize there were seven pages to this, so I guess I have two concerns, first of all, it's the flow chart on number four. It really is, I thought in our previous conversations that the principals were gonna, and the technology folks were gonna answer to the director of curriculum, rather than them all being on the same level. I'd kind of like to see that change in the flow chart, so that we all have an understanding that the director of curriculum is gonna drive what's going on at the principal level. You know, the part is, I really believe that we should be getting monthly updates from such a sizable investment, so that we understand where we are and what we're making progress on. The other thing, you know, and again, I am apologizing, it would have been my intent that I brought this to you before, but, was that I really wanted to be sure that we got somebody that had a proven track record as a curriculum director, and I don't see that in the job description and the qualifications.
I could put that in there, because I'm on the same page with you, I'm looking for somebody that's got experience implementing already, rather than grooming and growing, because we're really at an infancy stage, and I'd like somebody with experience that could do that, so I could put that in the job description if that's so desired. Talk to me a little bit about the, I totally get what you're saying, because I think that the curriculum director and what we implement has to be, what oversees the principals. I'm trying to think of a way to roll that into the flow chart, because there's so many other roles that the principal grabs that I've got to oversee that the curriculum director wouldn't touch. It just really, yeah, I know what you mean.
I just believe that that curriculum director should come up between the superintendent and that other line.
Okay. Because no matter what we do, my thought process in there is that is all collaboration, it should all better be hand in hand, including technology and everything else.
I think we all understand that they're gonna have to carry a stick too.
Yeah.
Well, I would push back a little bit against that, just from an organization's standpoint in what Mike is saying, if Dr. Greenly has to coordinate all of the directors, and also including the administrative responsibilities, our principals, that if a curriculum director or director of curriculum has curricular authority, then that can be used by Dr. Greenly to ensure that whatever mandates or whatever authority that the director position has is enforced, without necessarily reorganizing the org tree.
Carl, is your concern putting the curriculum director in the straight line underneath the superintendent? And Ed, is that your intention, or do you mean a line to the right or left that doesn't even lead to really anybody?
My take on it is that essentially, my understanding is what we're gonna try and accomplish was that the director of the curriculum was going to have the authority, right, or the mandate to come in and make sure that we were hitting benchmarks, that we were hitting standards, that we were gonna align the technology with making sure that we hit those benchmarks, that we hit those standards, that we're gonna make sure that all programs, special ed, regular ed, was going to make sure that we hit all those benchmarks, and that the director of business services was going to be part of that process of getting feedback from back and forth from that person about what resources we needed to invest in. So from my standpoint, it makes sense for that person to not be on the same line as those other people. That's just where I was at, I'm sure.
I think we're all on the same page with trying to make that chart represent the right.
I don't know, I guess I don't want to get hung up on the chart. I want to make sure that we all have an understanding that we're gonna make this kind of an investment, that we expect immediate results, and then all of these people are going to work together with that person to make that happen, and ultimately, Mike is the only employee we have, I'm not suggesting that that person should only answer to us, that's not where I'm going. But, so, yeah, maybe I got too focused on the chart, but I want to at least make sure that we all understand.
But that that curriculum coordinator or director is the one that's helping to derive those curricular decisions.
Right.
Yep.
If we're gonna make that kind of investment and move in the academic needle, that all those people are, that that's all flowing towards that person, and we're getting what we need to get something done.
And they can make sure that it's being implemented in the classroom, because, yeah, we're missing that.
And my piece to that is then, if it's not, like, let's say, I'm just gonna pick on Heather, because she's here tonight, but that's not the case, but if it wasn't, then whose role is that? To me, that would be my role, to come back to that principal and say, this is what we expect, this is what we want taught, and I need that to be executed. So, I know what you're saying, and I agree with that, because that's where I need that curriculum coordinator, that expertise.
That's where I thought we were, and I guess I, maybe I focused on this too much, but-
That's okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with the role of that person, if there was an issue, who's gotta call it out?
I think that's my concern, not that we have the clear line of whose authority is, where do you sit in that structure, but more that in this position, we've clearly articulated their domain, what they have control of and what they're responsible for, because we're really trying to consolidate responsibilities that have been scattered around to different administrators and/or have not been covered under one person. So I think we need to be very clear with that, to avoid the ambiguity, so that whatever accountability needs to be there, can be there.
I don't, I don't necessarily suggest that we need to change the job description, but we do need regular periodic updates here from that person.
I think that's very fair, with an update of what's going on monthly.
They understand that, how important we think it is, you know, we want to hear where we are, what progress has been made.
Would you like me to add a line in there about maybe experience preferred?
I'll trust you, I mean, I think you, I think we're both on the same page, I'll trust you with the wording in there, I don't want to write your job description, that's not my, not my deal, I just, when I say regular, it doesn't have to be monthly, but it certainly needs to be.
No, but I think the communication piece is good, so that we know what, where we're at with implementation, what we're working on, our focus on it.
Is curriculum instruction a master's degree in curriculum instruction, is that, is curriculum instruction a general term, or is that a-
There's a lot of different degrees.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
But there's usually a focus of some sort of curriculum development, depending on what college they come from, but there usually is a degree in curriculum development.
Specifically?
Beyond, not tied with just an administrative type 75, it's a, it's an actual master's degree in curriculum development. Can I phrase that?
Yeah, I have one.
You've got one.
I have a specific master's, or degree program in curriculum instruction, so they're-
Specifically towards a curriculum director. So it's a master's degree.
Any, any other question? Do we have a motion or a second?
I'll make a motion to approve a full-time curriculum director.
Second.
That's okay.
We have a motion by Reneger and a second-
Hazelhurst, please.
I'm sorry, close enough.
I was gonna tell you afterwards, I'm writing Reneger, no, it's Hazelhurst.
It's all right.
Another Brian.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right, any further question? Any further discussion? Tom, did you want to interject anything, Brian, anything further? No? All right, roll call, please Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
This is Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
This is Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
This is Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
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 Yes.